We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting here in the Village of Woodline, March the 28th, 2023. We'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, right now, we just want to pause and say thank you for allowing us to come back here to the Village of Woodline to do just what we say we are here to do, and that is the business of the Village of Woodline. We ask that you bless everyone that is in attendance today. We ask for a special blessing on our council member Bobby Lawson, as he is going with some sickness in his family, and we know that in the end, you'll win. And Lord, we just ask for our special guest today, the Lady Vikings. We're just excited for them to be with us tonight. And again, Lord, we just ask that you just bless us whole, and these blessings we ask in the name of Son Jesus' name and for His sake, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Esther Boyd here.
Rosemary Brown.
Present.
Cindy Chandler.
Present.
Pamela Fitzgerald.
Present.
Robert Lawson, who was absent tonight. Erin Tillman III.
Present.
Mayor Poole.
Present.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Robert Lawson.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. Reading and disposal of previous minutes, regular council meeting from February the 28th. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes in front of us tonight? If we don't have any of those, I just need a motion to approve those minutes from, again, February 28th, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes from February 28th, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting from March the 14th, 2023. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes in front of us tonight? Having none, I just need a motion to approve those minutes in front of us.
I'll make a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes from March 14th, 2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. Pointing, confirmation, presentations. We do have one presentation tonight from council. Coach Davis, if you could bring our wonderful Lady Vikes up front, council, if we could just maybe scale on the side of them. If you choose to come down.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You want us behind you?
Yeah, come behind me.
Come behind me.
Just a minute. We have our, there he is. We also have our superintendent of Princeton City Schools with us tonight, Mr. Tom Burton, please come. We also have a board member, Ms. Gina Ruffin-Moore, please come and join us.
Yeah. Come on.
All right. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. The proclamation reads as follow: Whereas the Village of Woodline salutes the girls' varsity basketball team of Princeton High School, affectionately known as the Lady Vikes, for winning the 2023 Division One State of Ohio Championship. Whereas the entire team has shown outstanding sportsmanship, scholastic achievement, and citizenship, making us all proud. And whereas this 2022-2023 team has had an outstanding record, 28-2, defeating Olmsted Falls 69-51, thus bringing the Ohio State Champion back to Princeton High School since 2014. And whereas the Village of Woodline congratulates all of the following team members, and if I mess up a name, don't hold me. Soleil Williams, Dewana Carter Hartley.
Diana.
Diana?
Yes.
Amen. Lassanja Hill. Lassanya Hill. Mary Gerton.
Mari Gerton.
Kaylee Forson.
Kelly.
Kelly. Thanks, Coach. Heaven Snee. Jaden Maven. Paris Reed. Jordan Champion. Sanaya Carr. Kiara Brooks. And head coach Dee Davis. Ryan Simmons. Michelle Booker. Behind me. Cornetia Morris.
There she is.
And Tom Cassidy. And now therefore, I, Mayor Brian K. Poole, along with council members Cindy Chandler, Rosemary Brown, Robert Lawson, Esther Boyd, Pam Fitzgerald, and Erin L. Tillman III, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March the 28th, 2023, in the Village of Woodline, Lady Vikes Day. I have set myself aside. Wonderful. Coach, Coach, you got something to say?
I'm so proud of you guys.
Coach, you got something to say so they can see y'all?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure, sure, sure. Congratulations. I was working from the clock.
All right. I just want to say thank you so much to Mayor Poole and the Woodline Council members for this honor. We've been super elated to have this opportunity to share with the community in our success that we've had this season. These young women behind me have had an amazing year. They've worked their tails off, and you know, the fruits of their labor has come to fruition. So we're so proud of them. We're thankful to our administration, our boosters, our parents, the Princeton community all together. It's just been a great ride, and we're just looking forward to the future and sending off our seniors off to college and have an amazing career. So we're so pleased and so blessed to be in this position, and we thank you all.
Again, we, Coach Davis, we just thank you for you and the Lady Vikes. It's just, it's a good day to be a Viking, right? And we always go around saying that we bleed the blood of a Viking. We truly do that. And so, again, congratulations for bringing it home here to Cincinnati, Ohio. Yes. Good job.
All right. All right. Miss Boyd had to correct me. I love that when she corrects me. It's called Olmsted Falls, and she is from the Cleveland area originally, so she corrected me. I like that. Shaw High School.
All right.
His dad was football coach. Very good. Thank you.
Right. Clerk, has anybody signed up for petitions, comments from the public?
Yes, we have 15.
All right. We're here to listen tonight.
Listen under.
All right.
Good. First person we have on is, thank you. Fletcher?
Make sure we're good here, all right? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
My pleasure.
City manager. Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Gabriel Fletcher, and I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Social Justice Powered by the Urban League. What we do is, we do police reform, collaborative effort, communities, police throughout the region of southwestern Ohio. And I'm here tonight because it's come to our attention that the village has engaged in a search for a police chief at least twice up to this point. Both times, a candidate was denied for one reason or another. And the fact that no official chief has been selected and that that position has remained vacant is a cause of concern for the community. So we would like to urge council tonight to put forth a process to find a qualified candidate for the position, and we're willing to assist at the center in that process because we understand that citizens benefit from an experience in efficient leadership. Additionally, we would like to see the next process accomplished as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief.
Greetings, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor. Manager. Council.
Good evening.
I just had a, just a question that's actually related to the search for the position of police chief, just trying to get a status. So first, I guess my first question is, is the village still in active search for a police chief? Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Wade Johnston? Wait a minute. Are you the president?
I'm the president.
Yes.
We're gonna wait on you. Cameron Foster?
Mayor, city manager, council, I'm Cameron Foster from the Coombes Summer Richmond Program and the Summer Feed Program. And I understand there are some questions that come about to me. That program is for the, Coombes Camp will be at Woodline Recreation Center, and there will also be another camp at the Rec Center. And I understand that you all would like to open it up to the community. And I was sharing with the city manager earlier today, we can open it up. Now, kids, we can say, we order all this food. Kids who don't come and eat that food, it's $5 per meal per day that you all will be responsible for paying for. So we talked about maybe having a registration program through the Woodline Rec with Ms. Paula Sherman, families of these kids on this roster, because we have to order every day. So by noon each day, we have to place our order back in, and we would need an accurate amount of food for outside camps, outside village people and the camp people. So like we were saying, they charge $5 per meal that's not consumed per day. We may have hot meals on a particular day, I think it's maybe two days out of the week, and so kids don't come eat those hot meals, there's no way to re-warm those meals up to give them away. They have to eat at the camp. They cannot take their food out. So a parent can't come and pick it up, and pick this up for my child or another organization to say, I'm coming to pick this food up. They have to eat at the site. So just wanted to let you all know, we're open to discussing and even further work, you know, make everything work, because we enjoy being at Woodline Rec. We've been there several years. We were there before we even had a camp there. We were coming down swimming every summer, paying whatever the fee was. And I'll share this, my kids at your rec, at your concession stand down there at the pool, they spend $100 per day. So it's like, we go there three times a week, so that's an extra $300 that we're bringing into the community. So we bring money to the community. We love working with the community, but we can't assume responsibility for that food if the kids don't show up and eat that food. So we may want to have a further discussion about that another time, but that's all I have at this time.
Thank you for your service.
Very well.
I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you much. We enjoy doing it. Been doing it over 30 years.
And let me ask you again, you said that we should have a registration?
I mean, that would be a way to maybe track who comes or give us a number. Because we, so we'll order maybe 20 from our camp. The Woodline say they'll have, I remember they have. So when I place the order, I need to know exactly how many kids are gonna be there.
So we can set up some type of registration?
Set up some type of registration, and that way we'll know per day. You know, beyond, because kids go away to go out of town, and they don't show up, and you order the food. They not there, then you stuck with the bill.
Right.
You're stuck with them, not us, okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to invite you to our, many of the whole meeting that we're having next month. What day is, I forget what day it's on.
Second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday of the month, and at that time, I think we can ask other questions that we may have, and make sure that we have all the proper information regarding registering the outside, non-campers.
Non-campers, yeah. That'd be fine. Just let me know the daytime and location, I'll be there.
I'll make sure Mr. Fitzgerald gets in touch with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
So Mayor, we have a presentation from...
Oh, all right, vikes. Good evening.
I'm Gina Ruffin-Moore. I live in beautiful Woodline at 961 Timberland Drive, and I have three things to say. First and foremost, I'm so happy to see our neighbor and former police chief, Aaron Tillman, sitting there, your appointee for the Woodline Council, number one. Number two, our homeowners association is a bit concerned about some flooding problems on Timberland Drive, specifically at 1350 Timberland and the houses on both sides of that property. Apparently, there's flooding from the business that's behind those houses. So we might want to solicit the help of your village manager in helping us to solve that problem. And the third and final problem is the noise coming from the main company is a, I guess they produce chemicals?
Flavoring company.
What is it?
Flavoring.
Flavoring. Flavoring company. They're quite noisy. I have called them over the years at least twice, and the problem is apparently one of their blowers or fans on the outside malfunctions every two years, which causes a constant ringing noise near my house, because I live at the end of the street. So thank you for your time and consideration, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. Mr. Charlie, I know that a couple of Ms. Moore's concerned. The one, I know that you've already started that process, took a ride over to the Timberland area to look at that water issue, so I think we've identified that. So we are working with that. That, we captured that a couple weeks ago. Okay, very well.
Your presentation from Mill Creek Triangle Trail, where Wade Johnston, Mr. Foster...
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor and Council for the opportunity to...
Congratulations.
ID. Take them with you. Take all of them. I don't need no more, child.
Look how cute they are.
They're so cute. They are. I just sent you, I just found out Soleil's daddy. I'm a future... I was like, oh my God, Orlando.
Be ready that her brother went to the state.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council for the opportunity to speak to you here tonight. My name is Wade Johnston. I'm the Executive Director of Tri-State Trails. We are a nonprofit organization that is working to connect and expand the trail and bikeway network around greater Cincinnati. It has a slight delay on it, but it should work. Or if you want, you can give it to me, and I can just tell me when you need the next slide. There we go. So Tri-State Trails is a nonprofit organization. We're working to build a trail system and connect it. We provide technical assistance to local governments and nonprofit groups who are working on trail projects. And one of the things that we specialize in is helping foster multi-jurisdictional projects that cross the jurisdictional lines. And that's what we're here to talk to you about today, the Mill Creek Triangle Trail. Next slide, please. So hopefully, you all see the benefits of trails, since you have the existing West Fork Mill Creek Greenway in your community already. There's a whole host of benefits. I won't talk through them all, but you know, the big thing that we're trying to do is connect communities, provide a safe option for biking and for walking and running, and make the community a more vibrant place by having that type of amenity. Next slide, please. When we think about bike infrastructure, you know, sometimes people picture, you know, an older guy on a bike in Lycra who's riding on the road, trying to move as fast as he can, right? When we're designing bike infrastructure, we are trying to make it welcoming and safe for people of all ages and ability levels. So what this chart shows is a spectrum. There's a spectrum of bike facilities that you can install to accommodate a certain audience, you know? So on the far left is what we call a trail or a shared use path that is fully separated from the road. It feels comfortable and safe. It's like what you've got out here in front of the community center. And then in the middle are various types of different bike lanes with a protection or without a protection. And then on the right is what we call a shared roadway, where it's just riding with traffic. And overwhelmingly, what we hear from the public is folks are interested in riding bikes. They like to do it on the weekends for fun on the trails, but they don't feel safe doing it in their everyday life, because a lot of times, making that route requires you to ride with traffic to get where you need to go. So we're trying to form a network in the center of Hamilton County that connects to most of the communities. Next slide, please. And that is the Mill Creek Triangle Trail. So the reason we call it the Triangle Trail is it kind of looks like a triangle. Starting at Glenwood Gardens, we would go south down the existing West Fork Mill Creek Greenway to Arlington Heights and Lockland, and then north through Redding, Evendale, Sharonville to connect to Sharon Woods, and then west through Sharonville and Glendale to connect back to Woodline. Next slide, please. History of this, it's been going on for a long time, and as I was looking up, well, this is the history of our organizations. The Connecting Active Communities Coalition is the group that Michelle has been leading since 2009. Tri-State Trails formed in 2012 and developed some regional trail, a regional trail plan for our region. And then in 2015, the vision for the Mill Creek Triangle started to come together. So here we are, eight years later. We've been meeting monthly for going on eight years now, and we're finally at a point where we're ready to take the next big step of doing a feasibility study for the trail, and I'll explain why. Next slide. So there's all these different communities and organizations that are at the table as a part of the Connecting Active Communities Coalition. 13 local governments, a number of county agencies, all working together to make it easy for people to live a healthy, active lifestyle. Next slide, please. So here's what I was starting to say before, as we were looking at the history of the trail, Glenwood Gardens was built in 2002, but the section that you all have here in Woodline is one of the first pieces built back in 2004. So you guys are like trailblazers with what you've already accomplished. That has encouraged Woodline to build the trail, or I'm sorry, Wyoming to build the trail in a couple different phases. And then the big wind in our sails happened in the past year and a half, when Great Parks got the grant to connect Glenwood Garden to Wynton Woods. Hopefully, you've heard about that. It's gonna be about three and a half miles of trail. And then last December, Great Parks closed on a piece of railroad property south of Sharon Woods that connects down to Glendale-Milford Road. So these are two huge chunks of the triangle that are now publicly held moving forward. And so what we want to do is figure out how much it will cost to build the sections of trail that don't exist, that are on publicly held land. And then where we're trying to close the gaps in the trail network, and we don't have the route totally solidified, we're looking to explore different routes and conduct community engagement as part of the process, to position different trail sections to apply for grants in the future. And this is pretty much what I just talked about, trying to work with an engineering firm to get the cost estimates that we need, figure out where we need bridges and retaining walls and other structures, figure out where we need to buy private property or work towards a long-term land acquisition strategy, and then position the project to apply for grant funding. Next slide, please. Go to the next slide. This is the triangle again. At the southern end of the Mill Creek watershed, we want to connect to the Crown Trail Network. If you've heard about that, this is another project we've been leading in Cincinnati, would connect you down to Lower Price Hill along the Mill Creek, and then hook up with the Ohio River Trail from Smale Park to Lunkin Airport, out the Little Miami Trail, which goes to Loveland, connecting to the Wasson Way Trail into Hyde Park, Evanston, Avondale, forming this big network in Hamilton County. So just to show you how it's relevant to you, this is the Evendale-Sharonville piece. Next slide, please. Then we'll go from Glendale-Milford through Redding down to Arlington Heights and Lockland. Next slide, please. As part of this I-75 reconfiguration and unifying I-75, we're hoping to use the current northbound section of the highway and repurpose that land into a vibrant place down in Lockland, and then going up to Wyoming. Next slide, please. This is the section from Sharonville to Glendale and hooking up with Glenwood Gardens. Next slide, please. This is how we would connect to the city from Arlington Heights down to Springer Village. And final slide of the maps is, how is this relevant to you? So there are several different spots on your trail that are less than ideal for the alignment, to make it really comfortable and safe for people to get all the way through. One of those intersections is at Grove Place, where the trail goes behind or butts the restaurant, and then is up against Springfield Pike. So we want to look at, can we improve that? So it's a safer crossing of Springfield Pike. And then as a part of that, with Wyoming and Lincoln Heights, Michelle was at Lincoln Heights last night presenting on this, we want to figure out, how can we get over the railroad to connect to Lincoln Heights, so that we really are forging bridges between the communities? And then we have one really key success already as a part of this, working with your city manager and your finance director, and Great Parks of Hamilton County, with the Riddle Road Bridge, which is a sidewalk right now. We would want to widen that to make it a trail. Well, we learned that the Hamilton County engineer is planning to rebuild that bridge in 2025. And so we said, hey, can you widen the bridge and make it the specs of a trail? And they said, well, we've already designed it, but we were able to get funding from what's called the Hamilton County Transportation Improvement District, down, which is funded through the county, and they are going to spend some additional money to design the trail and pay for the construction of the widened bridge. When they do that, it was pretty easy for them to make that change, because we're so early in the process. So that's really the benefit of having this study on the books for your community, is to say when these improvements are being made to your roadways, is when you can ask for these types of improvements in real life, right? So that's already a key success. Next slide, and here is an image of right where that is, and connecting right to the school. So next slide, please, I think. Okay, so here's our fundraising strategy. The way that we are going about this is reaching out to all the communities that are impacted, a number of county agencies, a number of other partners, to ask everybody to chip in. It's like a pass-the-hat kind of fundraising effort. We're asking communities that are getting more detailed engineering services, where the land is already publicly held, like Evendale and Sharonville, we're asking them for more funding for the study, because they're gonna get more services. For most of the communities that are receiving, you know, benefits that are not as super detailed engineering services, we're asking a range from like $2,500 to $7,500. And so we had penciled in Woodline to ask you all for $7,500 for the study, because we would be doing detailed engineering for that intersection at Grove and connecting over to Lincoln Heights. And so this is how we're trying to raise the $200,000 that we need to do the study. And I believe that is my last slide. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Would that be, would you be able to share that with the council, so we can digest that a little up closer, because that small print, I can't see.
Absolutely, yes. Sure.
So Wade, I'm sorry, I'm Michelle Starr, I'm a resident here. Just a quick question. For your feasibility study, there was a color gradient showing blue, red, green, but your first couple of slides, you showed green, yellow, red from safe all the way to not as safe. Does those original colors correlate with that feasibility? Okay.
No, no, that was just a chart, and the color coding for those lines on the map are just so we can break it into chunks.
There's a lot of red.
Yes.
Maybe you should point that out.
No, I had not even thought about that. Yeah, yeah, it's a good connection, yeah.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
No worries. Thank you, Michael, thank you. Wade, thank you so much for coming today. We're excited. We've come a long way with that trail, and I think hearing the first one, Mr. Donahue was on council, and start hearing more and more about it, and it has really blown up here in Hamilton County. Can't wait for the finish date. I don't know, that's a long way out, but we're getting there. And so I believe it's safe to say that we are on board here in the Village of Woodline for that study and keep...
So that's really the benefit of having this study on the books for your community is to say when these improvements are being made to your roadways is when you can ask for these types of improvements on, in, in real life, right? So that's already a key success. Next slide. And here is an image of right where that is and connecting right to the school. So next slide, please, I think. Okay, so here's our fundraising strategy. The way that we are going about this is, is reaching out to all the communities that are impacted, a number of county agencies, a number of other partners to ask everybody to chip in. It's like a pass the hat kind of fundraising effort. We're asking communities that are getting more detailed engineering services where the land is already publicly held, like Evendale and Sharonville. We're asking them for more funding for the study because they're going to get more services. For most of the communities that are receiving, you know, benefits that are not as super detailed engineering services, we're asking a range from like $2,500 to $7,500. And so we had penciled in Woodlawn to ask you all for 7,500 for the study because we would be doing detailed engineering for that intersection at Grove and connecting over to Lincoln Heights. And so this, this is how we're trying to raise the $200,000 that we need to do the study. And I believe that is my last slide. You're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Would that be, would you be able to share that with the council so we can digest that a little bit closer? Because that small print, I can't see.
Absolutely, yes. Sure.
So Wade, I'm sorry, I'm Michelle Starr, I'm a resident here. Just a quick question. For your feasibility study, there was a color gradient showing blue, red, green, but your first couple of slides, you showed green, yellow, red from safe all the way to not as safe. Does those, those original colors correlate with that feasibility? Okay.
No, no, that was, that was just a chart and the color coding for the, those lines on the map are just so we can break it into chunks.
A lot of red.
Yes. I had not even thought about that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you bet.
Thank you. Michael, thank you. Wade, thank you so much for coming today. We're excited. We've come a long way with that trail. And I think hearing the first one, Mr. Donahue was on council and started hearing more and more about it, and it has really blown up here in Hamilton County. Can't wait for the finish date. I don't know if that's a long way out, but we're getting there. And so I, I believe it's safe to say that we are on board here in the village of Woodlawn for that study.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Yeah, and I meant to mention Mike because Mike has been a huge champion for this trail.
That's why I mentioned.
Michelle told me too, and I totally forgot.
That's why I mentioned.
And, you know, he's been at the table for the whole time of this.
And he's brought some of us along with him.
And we know some of you guys have been out on the Mill Creek paddling. Thanks for, for being, you know, a participating community in this process.
Wade, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very well.
How y'all doing?
How you doing tonight?
I'm all right. My name is Shay Smith. I'm the CEO of Black Intelligent Minds. And I grew up here. I grew up in Lincoln Heights. I grew up in Woodlawn. I'm, I went, I graduated from Princeton. Long story short, Mr. Lawson, he had cut my head the other day, and I was just giving him like my outlook on what I want, and I needed a storefront. And he was basically telling me that it was a spot available. And my bad, I'm not really too good with the public speaking.
No worries, no worries.
No worries. But basically, he was just telling me, like, after I gave him my outlook on how I see my store to be ran. Basically, my, my mom, she used to get sent to the store with the note on the shirt, you know what I'm saying? By my great-grandmother. My great-grandmother, she stayed up on bills in Lincoln Heights. My family's known all through Lincoln Heights and stuff like that, and in Woodlawn. I have two sides of my family. But my biggest thing is, is I want to bring that type of stuff back. So that way, the, the youth, because I'm 31, I'm still youth too. Well, you know what I mean?
Me too. Me too.
But I, I, I really just want to bring that type of lifestyle back. I know I can't sit up there and, hey, you can take this sandwich and, you know what I mean? But at, at the same time, you don't know what a person is going through. You don't know what a person has going, going at home as far as children, as far as a teenager, whatever. So at the end of the day, if I could sit up there and open up a shop, a, a store, like a storefront, and bring some kids in and, hey, sweep this up, I'll sit up there and I'll give you a couple dollars or take that trash out. I, I'll do some, I'll fix you a sandwich and some chips and a pot, something like that. At the end of the day, I just, I want to be able to give back something that I never had. So I don't know if it's possible, but if it is, I would love for any type of y'all outlook or insight on whatever about how it could be possible for a store to be available or a storefront. I don't know exactly how to go about it, but like I said, I had expressed it to Mr. Lawson. He sat up there and told me to come and talk to y'all, and I told him I was a little nervous about it, so.
Mr. Smith, what I would suggest you do is get with the managers, have an appointment with the manager. There's a process in terms of what you need to do to present your business plan. So anything that happens when you open a business here in the village of Woodlawn, it has to go through planning. Planning basically gives its blessing on that, and they pass it on for, to full council for an approval. Without having all of those details in place tonight, I, I would go the route of just having that conversation with the manager so that he could probably walk you through that process, right? So you don't feel like you, you're defeating yourself or whatever. Let him help you walk that process, and then hopefully it'll come back to us to, to review and planning, and then we'll go from there. How does that sound?
That's fine, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, and I hope you get this going.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You as well, Mr. Smith.
Thank you for your passion.
All right, very well. Committee of the whole, March the 14th, these are committee reports.
Committee of the whole met on March 14th at 6:30 PM. And it's a pretty lovely report, so I'm just going to try and get some of the highlights and to let you know also that once our website goes live, and I believe that's supposed to be April 1st, this report will be on that website in its entirety. The meeting ultimately is set at 6:30 PM. Members present, myself, Mayor Poole, Esther Boyd, Cindy Chandler, Pam Fitzgerald, Robert Lawson, and Erin Tillman. Also present was our finance director, Kim Engel, Victoria Parks from our Public Works, Paula Sherman from our recreation, Lieutenant Kevin Williams, our interim chief, and our code enforcer, Roy Johnson. I'm sorry. And our village manager, Mr. Turley. There was an MOU, our Juneteenth, Juneteenth celebration, which is going to be, I think, June the 19th of this year. We discussed that. We talked about the MOU. The MOU was finalized, and Mr. Turley has signed that MOU. So the works are beginning to start now for the Juneteenth celebration. Harmony Park. The land for Harmony Park has a deep restriction that prevented the village from breaking ground without written approval from the OWPC. The OWPC is the Ohio Public Works Commission. That approval was granted, so we're going to be starting work this spring. The Harmony Park. Also, we talked about HR audit. We feel there's a need for an HR representation in the village, and so we're going to be looking into having an analysis done. And Strategic HR was presented as the person that's going to do the analysis. I believe there was going to be another one or two companies.
So I've contacted other companies, but right now we've actually contracted with Strategic HR.
Okay. So they will be doing the human resource analysis, and I believe I saw that it should take between four to six weeks possibly.
Yes, ma'am.
Then also, we have, we talked about the Mill Creek Triangle Trail, which they did the presentation on. The $7,500 that was requested. I believe all of council is in sync with that, so that should be okay. Also, there was talk about our new website, which is supposed to go live on April the 1st. The Southern Gateway Project. The village has received a mini grant for $40,000 to design a southern gateway with the city of Wyoming. And a company by the name of KZF has been selected to do the design. And there will be more work, more information on that as this project gets on its way. And right now, it looks like the approximate cost is someplace in the neighborhood of $45,000. Ronnie Road and Woodstock High Line. The law director has prepared legislation to enter into a contract with Fred Newman Company to reconstruct Ronnie and Woodstock Road. Construction will begin in the spring of 2023. The project limits are the entire length of Ronnie Road, north and south of Mayview Forest, for a distance of 1,200 feet, and the entire length of Woodstock Drive, both north and south of Mayview Forest, for approximately a distance of 4,000, 1,400 feet. There will be a meeting with the residents on both Woodstock and Ronnie to bring them up to date as to what those, that construction will consist of. 10-146 and 10-150 Springfield Pike. There has been a request for proposal done by Alaway. They've given us a draft for that request for the proposal qualifications to develop the old barbecue restaurant property and the adjacent lot. That's the property that's there on the corner of Marion and Springfield Pike. So we're working on all of that. Springfield Pike Sidewalk and Greenwich Way Improvement. We got a grant from Sorda, and that grant was in the neighborhood of $1,221,600. And that funds Sorda to install sidewalks and Springfield Pike and improve Greenwich Way. I don't know anyone that travels on Riddle Road right there at Woodlawn Boulevard, right there at that stop sign, that intersection right there. There's ripples in the road, and we're looking into seeing what that's going to cost to get fixed. That road is barely three years old. Our CT consultant is going to be working on a cost to estimate the repairs of that. And it's a possibility that the only possible repair is to have concrete there that should have been probably done in the first place. Public Works Facility. We have contacted with the company by the name of Lusk to build a new salt farm. That's going to be in the neighborhood of $292,000. We're also getting quotes for a new storage building and several pieces of heavy equipment, including a skid steer, a fork, scag, zero-turn mower, morgue, a backhoe, and a chipper shredder, shredder. Recreation Department. There has been a consulting company by the name of Crowe's that's going to do a recreation analysis. We've been asking for that to be done to make sure that we can get the best bay out of the Recreation Department, the Recreation Building. And so we're looking into getting that done. The cost to the village is going to be in the neighborhood of $23,000. Business, business window coverings. Some of our businesses have coverings that are covering the whole windows, and we found out from our code enforcer that that is not appropriate. There's a code that they are breaking, and the code basically says not more than 30% of each window area is to be covered. So we have a couple of businesses that are going to have to get in line with that. I think one of them has already begun to do the necessary steps to make sure they're there in compliance. Our Police Department. Intra-police chief Kevin Williams stated that he and two sergeants are enrolled in the FBI training for November, clean and pelk. Public Works. Crews are filling potholes throughout the village, Woodstock, Skillman, and Hillsmith. Thirty-five as a matter of fact, and trash was, trash was collected for entire village twice. Code enforcer. There's a a place that's on Marion and Grandview Home that needs to have the litter picked up and brushed back. Fire Department. Fire truck lawsuit settlement agreement ending in July, so we need to make sure everything is good. Our fire department is starting our fish fries back at the Pike, and those fish fries started, did they start?
Last Friday.
They started last Friday.
Correct. There are three of them.
Two, it's going to be three all total?
Total of three.
Two more Fridays, but they'll be doing a fish fry. Woodlawn Recreation, Parks and Recreation. Woodlawn's sixth and fourth grade elite teams have won the championships for their divisions, the A teams. Congratulations to Coach Shipman and the volunteer coaching team for the basketball. This is two years in a row we've won the championships. Baseball season has started. Registration is open, accepting ages five through 13. $80 for residents, $90 for non-residents. Summer camp update. All open garden spaces are filled. Thank you for Mary, oh, okay. Summer camp update, I'm sorry. Don't see anything there. All the open garden spaces are filled. Ms. Mary Wagner, she works very hard. She's with our WeThry, and they have a garden space, and the garden space is over there, isn't it, behind?
Family Dollar.
Family Dollar. All those spaces are filled up, you know, it's a good thing. The month of free family movie night has a total of 38, had a total of 38 participants. Featured movies is Wakata, Wakata Forever was a huge hit. We will offer one free movie night a month, starting with the Friday, with this Friday at 6:30. Hair Love and Hurricane Season. Is it this Friday coming or the next Friday?
No.
No.
It's not?
No.
I think that was on, that was.
I'm not, yeah, right, thanks.
New business. Council member asked the mayor for the village manager's evaluation, which we did get a copy of that result. Mr. Engel stated that the permanent budget will need to be voted on at our March council meeting. You know, there's in our packets to vote on. And that's it.
Very well.
Like I said, it was a pretty lovely meeting, and the entire report will be on the website.
Any questions for Ms. Brown, Committee of the Whole? Finance Committee, Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes, good evening. The Finance Committee meeting took place on March 20th at 7:00 PM. The meeting was called to order at 7:10 PM. Members present was myself, Ms. Esther Boyd, and Ms. Cindy Chandler was unfortunately, wasn't able to be at the meeting. Agenda items are as follows. The income tax update. The village collected $524,459.46 in taxes related to the month of February, which is great numbers. Total receipts since its inception was $3,419,104.59. Disbursements was $1,124,148.22, and the fund balance at this time is $2,294,956.37. And as Mrs. Brown mentioned just a bit ago, we will have some things started in our road construction that's already planned, that you'll start to see barrels hopefully sometime soon this spring. A couple of other things that we talked about, and then I'll turn this over to our finance director, is we talked about the overtime report. The village spent $26,116.87 in overtime for the month of February. February with the police department and fire accounting for 64% and 24% of overtime charges respectively. Another quick thing I just wanted to talk about briefly is another thing we talked about is our recreation receipts and expenditures for, as of February 28, 2023. There was lots of discussion regarding the expenses of the rec center, the rec center's offerings, and some of the line item details about the rec center, which included receipts and expenditures, salaries, billing expenses, supplies, pools, and parks. So that's what some of our main conversation, and I will turn it over to our finance director, and he can give the remainder of the report.
Very well, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? All right, I have enough.
There's a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Todd? Yes, ma'am.
Just, when you guys do that, I, I realize you have numbers, but.
Just when you guys do that, I realize you have numbers, but are those numbers that you're discussing, the expenses, incomes, and expenditures, are those available to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, they're, it's public information.
All information is public information, yes.
Will that be something that's going to be on our new website that's coming forward April first?
Yes, these reports should be on the website. You can actually request these reports if you like, but everything should be on the website as soon as it's up, is it April one, right?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Michelle, no worries.
So I keep hearing this website maybe updated by April first. Is there a contact person, would ITN contact person for Woodline if the public have questions about the site? Like who do we contact?
I would have to direct you to the village manager on that and then, yeah, so, yes. Okay, you're welcome. Municipal Managers Report.
All right, I'm going to breeze through this.
I thought it was finance.
Did I?
Oh, did he pass it?
Oh, that's right.
It's not his.
No, because it's not his turn.
It's not his turn.
I'm sorry, Finance Director. That was our order to answer, I was thinking you came before me.
Yes.
Municipal Managers Report is on the agenda after Finance Committee.
All right. All right, June nineteenth, oh, mayor, members of council. I've signed the MOU with Call Play for Juneteenth and the first planning committee meeting will be April fifth. We're going to hold them every other Wednesday until we get a month out. And then we're going to hold meetings weekly until the event takes place. And we also reserve the right to schedule more meetings as needed to make sure that we have a successful event. Harmony Park, I have the pre-construction meeting that is tentatively scheduled for April fifth. And the groundbreaking will take place in April for Harmony Park. We're going to invite everyone to that, we're going to put that on ICRC, and we're going to make a big deal out of that. The H.R. audit is ongoing. Right now, we're uploading documents to a web portal for review and then site visits will follow after that. We just saw a beautiful presentation on the Mill Creek Triangle Trail feasibility study. There's nothing I can add to that. And the Southern Gateway Project, of course, we're still meeting about that. And also with Summer Camp, you have two MOUs for your consideration in the legislation for this meeting. For Timberland and Timberview, Mike Stevens from CT Consultants is going to meet Mr. Williams and also our Public Works Director on the street to look at any defects that may have occurred over the winter and make sure that the company, Mount Pleasant, takes care of those before we release the final ten thousand dollars of their contract. We've contracted with PES, which is Plank Round Equipment Services, to start working on the baseball field for baseball season. Ronnie Road and Woodstock, we plan on having a pre-construction, or I will have a pre-construction meeting also early April, hopefully right around the time I have going to Harmony Park. And then we will have a public meeting where the residents will be notified. They will be able to ask questions. And we will also come up with a communication strategy so that they know throughout the project what's going on and when they will have access and when that access will need to be taken away in order to do construction. But we'll keep them in the loop. We mentioned Springfield Pike and Greenwich Way. The only update with the village pool is there's about twenty-five thousand dollars in maintenance that has to be done before we can open. We've already got that contracted, the P.O. has been written, and we are on schedule to open May twenty-seventh, I believe it is.
Yes.
Also, the sunshades have been ordered. The company that's doing the sunshades, Queen City Auding, is actually going to come and install one shade to give us an idea of how to install them and also how they fit. The shades will also be in service before we open the pool. Going through the rest, there's no new information on the Riddle Road ripples or the public works facility as reported out by Ms. Councilmember Brown. The Recreation Department program analysis, right now I'm waiting for two other quotes. Proz Consulting seems to be the most amenable and to meet our needs, however. I've got a phone call tomorrow and then I'm trying to schedule one for the end of the week to get another proposal. And had a really good meeting on the gun range relocation. In your packet is an artist conception of what the new regional safety center, which will be located in Colrain Township, will look like. Hopefully, we're on schedule to stop the shooting right around twenty-twenty-five. With that, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
I got a couple of questions. Is there a warranty on the shades? Because I think they were.
There is a warrant, there's a warranty on the shades and yes, you're right, they're very expensive. I can find out what the warranty is from Queen City Auding. Usually it's a year, but I can find out from them.
Yeah, I would be interested. On the Juneteenth, I know you talked about meetings and I just want to make sure that there's council representation. I think it's supposed to be Councilwoman Cindy.
Yes, and also I think Mayor Poole is coming too.
Correct.
Can I just add to that? I know when we originally talked about the meetings, I requested, I requested to have the meetings in the evening so that my schedule would allow that I make it, but I see there in the morning, so I won't be able to make those meetings.
What I can do is right after we have the meeting, we can get together and then I can bring any concerns that you have and I can report out what we discussed at the meeting.
Can there be a substitute for the meeting? I mean, if she can't make it.
Of course.
I think that needs to happen.
Right now, the meetings are, what days?
They're Wednesdays, Wednesday at ten, ten a.m.
And there's no room to change that?
The meetings were requested to be in the morning. I mean, we can move them to another weekday if that works.
Did you say you could make it?
Mondays or Wednesdays I can make it.
Okay.
I have classes Monday, Wednesday.
So is that a change?
Change to what?
Councilmember Tillman will be the representative for the.
He'll join, he'll join, we'll both be there at the meeting.
Instead of.
Yeah, I can't make it.
We won't be able to get there on those Wednesday mornings.
I have another question. This was in regards to Timberland and Timberview. I know we talked last year about the, when the tree company came out and was digging up the roots. Those roots are growing back. So I don't know what you do next about that.
We will have a member from the tree board. I work with Ashley to go over there and to see what we can do to make sure that they do not tear up the brand-new sidewalks.
Yeah, I do, I do have a few pictures, so, from this past weekend, I was. If you need them.
Yes, if you could email those to me, I'd appreciate it.
Any other question?
No.
Along with Ms. Fitzgerald's question regarding Timberland, they planted, I guess they planted seeds or they put down straw, so it didn't take. So do they, we still have that?
I'll check into that.
For those areas that it didn't take?
For the grass?
Right.
Yeah, I'll definitely check on that.
Was that, there a warranty on that too or something?
Well, it's kind of hard to warranty grass.
You can't warranty.
No, I'm talking about the roots. I mean, far as they talked to the residents about.
The warranty on the.
I mean, if it's, to me, it didn't, whatever they did, didn't work, so.
But there was grass there before the work. There was grass there on the sidewalk.
So, are you referring to the trees?
She's referring to the roots.
Tree roots coming back up.
I'm not talking about the tree root, I'm talking about the grass where they boxed it in and they tore out good side and the side did not come back. That's what I'm referring to.
She was in, and you were talking about the roots.
I'll check on both.
Because that's what messed up the sidewalks in the first place, right? The roots grew.
Yes.
The sidewalks start to, over twenty years, where they're bad.
Any other questions for the manager?
Well, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The manager's report online also?
Not currently, but it will be, this entire packet will be on the.
The entire packet, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Well, the website, yeah, you can have a copy. The website goes live April first. We will be building out the website as it goes live. So, and eventually we will add all of that information to the website.
Michelle, if you want a copy of this, we certainly can get you a hard copy of this. Okay, okay. Finance Director's Report.
Thank you. To pick up where Ms. Fitzgerald left off, the March twenty-eighth, the committee provided appropriations and revenue reports. On February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, the village collected sixteen percent of budget revenues, expended fifteen percent of appropriations. General funds in line with other funds. Where the village dispersed seventeen percent of general fund expenditures and collected about nineteen percent of general fund budgeted receipts. Fund balance reports and bank reconciliation reports were also included in those packets for the community review. We did discuss certain legislation at the meeting, which will be on the agenda for tonight. There were three pieces of legislation to create new funds, all, one of which was the mini grant fund for the joint grant with us in Wyoming, one to the Sordic grant and one to the OPWC grant, as well as the permanent appropriations resolution or ordinance rather. That ordinance in your packets, we were reviewing that today, Excel got the better of me. So on that attachment on the first page, we have the mini planning grant fund labeled as two oh five four, two oh five five. And then on the reverse of that page, OPWC grant is noted as fund number twenty-nine ten and twenty-nine eleven. And the Sordic grant is also noted as twenty-nine ten and twenty-nine twelve. So I made those corrections for what we sent to the county and I'll give a lot of updated attachments as well. There's simply, I'll keep some Excel typing in. But no other issues with that. Other than that, I would just ask that the council approve the bank reconciliation receipt listing and bank listing.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to make a motion to approve approval of the bank reconciliation, the receipt listing, and the bank listing.
I'll second it.
All ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Law Director's Report.
Nothing to report, mayor.
Very well.
Hey, slow down, mayor.
Huh?
Slow down for me.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Very well. Couple of things that I just want to speak briefly on. Being that this is the, almost at the end of the month, I certainly do not want the month of March to go past without me saying this is National Women's Month. And so a big fan of recognizing all the women that are out here doing, doing the great things around town and abroad, all around. So this is National Women's Month, so all the women's hands off to you women out there. Safety, I talk about safety in my report every week. Spring break is coming in Princeton City Schools, starting on Monday. So I'm going to ask again that we watch our speed, just be mindful of our children playing in the neighborhoods this coming week. So we want, again, watch our speeding on these roads. In front of me, I have what is now the Woodline Napoli game. Not for sure if our camera is catching that. For the Woodline Napoli game, we, several of us went to a convention in Kansas City back in November. I was so excited to see this game and it was a Kansas City board game. We kind of brought that idea back to Cincinnati. We have a company right here in the village of Woodline who is so gracious enough to produce the board game and all proceeds, and each board is twenty dollars. And all proceeds, one hundred percent of the proceeds go to the Active Woodline, Inc., where we'll be able to put summer concert series on. So we're very excited about that. If you have not gotten a board game, the board game is available. Ms. Tanya in the Police Department has those at her, in her office, as well as I believe that there are some at the community center. So please get your board game. We would love to have these board games in all of the homes. We're really excited about this board game. I want to take this opportunity, Officer Brianna Sampson, I shared with our interim chief today that how proud I was of her today. She came into the school building, this is a week of testing for our students at Woodline. And throughout the state, testing is going on. But Brianna came in this morning and just was a sunshine of a face to see this morning. She engaged with our students. Her and I even got engaged with line dancing with the students prior to their testing this morning. Really excited. But she went a further step and said, mayor, I just want to encourage them. Brianna went into four of the classrooms, four of our classroom, two third-grade classes, two fifth-grade classes that we're testing today and just gave them an inspiration talk, just letting them know that they are worth and they have this and they've been studying all year long for this test. We know that we teach the test. And they, they were just elated by that. So just hats off to Officer Brianna Sampson, your leadership interim chief for that. Just let her know that we appreciate that and the students especially appreciate having a face in the building like that. So we just want to thank her for that. That is all that I have from my report. Yes, ma'am?
I also witnessed some compassion from your police. There was a lady who had been left by a bus, a senior citizen bus, Uppi Kroger. She was frightened, she was scared. And two of your officers were so kind to her and so gentle. They couldn't reach anybody with the number she had, but they took care of her.
Nice.
Put the groceries in, one of the police cars. So people were watching, so, yes, so thank you.
It's always good to hear those things.
Thank you, chief.
Wonderful, very well. Legislature, oh, one thing that I need to do is I do need an approval of my mayor's court monthly statement. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve mayor's court monthly statement in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion been moving properly, second, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Legislation, please.
Yes, mayor. The first item is ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand dollars special obligation real estate acquisition bond anticipation notes, twenty-twenty-three renewal by the village of Woodline, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such bonds and declaring, I'm sorry, payment of such notes and declaring an emergency.
Very well, I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three.
Did I hear some? I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the suspension.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson? I'm sorry. Karen Tillman, third?
Very well, I need a motion for passage of ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make a motion for passage of ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three.
There's a second on the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
Rose, I'm sorry, Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman, third?
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion declaring an emergency on ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I'd like to make, I would like to make a motion to declare an emergency for ordinance number zero eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second on the emergency, roll call, please.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman, third?
Aye.
Very well.
The next item is ordinance zero nine, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance to make permanent appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village of Woodline, State of Ohio during fiscal year end December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number zero nine, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make that motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number zero nine, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman, third?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes, yeah.
Very well. I need a motion for passage of ordinance number zero nine, twenty-twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion for passage of ordinance number zero nine, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman, third? Esther Boyd?
Aye.
The next item is ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance establishing. The next item is ordinance 10-2023, an ordinance establishing the CDBG mini planning grant fund within the village budget.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 10-2023.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 10-2023.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the suspension.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman III? Esther Bulway?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number 10-2023.
I'd like to make a motion for passage of ordinance number 10-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second on the passage. Roll call, please.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
The next item is ordinance number 11-2023, an ordinance establishing the OPWC Redna Terrace and Chester Road Improvement Fund within the village budget.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 11-2023.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number 11-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number 11-2023.
Make a motion for passage of ordinance number 11-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the passage.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Very well.
The next item is ordinance number 12-2023, an ordinance establishing the Sorda Greninger Springfield Pike Fund within the village budget.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 12-2023.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number 12-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the suspension, please.
Karen Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Yes, aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number 12-2023.
I'll make a motion for passage of ordinance number 12-2023.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Karen Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Next item is Resolution 09-2023, a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the installation of signage along US bicycle routes in the Village of Woodlawn.
I need a motion for passage of Resolution number 09-2023.
I'll make that motion for Resolution, for passage for Resolution number 9-2023.
There's a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Esther Bulway?
Yes, aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Karen Tillman III?
Aye.
The next item is Resolution 10-2023, a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a facility usage agreement with One Umbrella Vision, Inc., to operate a summer camp at the Village Recreation Center.
I need a motion for passage of Resolution number 10-2023.
I'll make a motion for passage of Resolution number 10-2023.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
No.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
No.
Karen Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Aye.
It does not pass.
It did not pass?
No. The three to two vote, it is not a tie, so the mayor cannot break the tie. The next item is Resolution 11-2023, a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a facility usage agreement with the Addiction Services Council to operate a summer camp at the Village Recreation Center.
You know, together. I need a motion for passage of Resolution number 11-2023.
I'll make a motion for passage of Resolution number 11-2023. I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Cindy Chandler?
If I can at this time ask a question, or is it, am I permitted to ask a question? I know during the presentation from Mr. Foster, the director of the Kumba Camp, he was invited to come back out to the Cal meeting. I would like to table this until then.
We can't table it unless the people who made the motion and seconded it withdraw their motion and their second. I would comment that the way I wrote the resolution was to approve the contract and substantially the form is attached, because I, was my understanding that the other side had not reviewed the contracts yet, and that would give us the ability to make any necessary tweaks after the fact, after passage. So, if that helps.
It does, thank you. And I'm sorry with the roll call, where were you?
Were we on roll?
We were on roll call.
Yeah, one roll call.
It's on me?
So you're first.
Um, aye.
Kamala Fitzgerald?
So can you, can I ask a question?
Sure you can.
Can you elaborate on that again? So you said tweaks, what do you?
So, a lot of times when we attach a contract to a resolution, we say, council approves this contract, attached here to and incorporated here by reference. So, at that point in time, we would not change any language within the contract, because council has already approved it as written. For this resolution, because it was my understanding that the parties, the party on the other side had not reviewed the contract yet, and may have some minor, non-substantive, you know, non-significant changes, the way the resolution was drafted is that council was approving it in substantially the form as attached there too. So, the intent and purpose of the contract wouldn't change, no material provisions would change, but if there are things that needed to be tweaked for clarification purposes, or to deal with any other non-material issues, those could be done after council approved the contract. Does that make sense?
So council has to, this has to be approved before you can go back and make changes? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to. It's just that I was advised that this was a time-sensitive matter, and it needed to come in front of council so that the parties who were going to be preparing summer camp could do what they needed to do to get summer camp started. So, because of that, and it was my understanding the other side had not had a chance to, normally I wouldn't put a contract in front of you unless both parties had seen the agreement, were in agreement to all the terms of the agreement, so that there would not be any changes that would happen after council approval.
So it sounds to me like there's still, there's still a lot of questions that it needs to be more discussed. So is that something we can table, or is that something we have to carry forward to?
The votes already, we're in the middle of the vote right now.
So you can't table it?
My understanding is that we have captured all the material terms to the agreement, that council had, that both sides had had, engaged in discussions. Council had indicated what its position was on those things. This contract was based, was drafted based on that council feedback on those issues. So, it's not like it's a concept that had, the concepts haven't been discussed before. It's just the final agreement has not been reviewed by the advisory council, nor had it been, had it been reviewed by One Umbrella Vision. I don't ex-
I was gonna say, I feel like we're stuck with this, not, I'm talking about stuck, both parties are kinda stuck on different sides. So it hasn't been totally resolved. It's still in a limbo stage.
I-
That's why I'm asking if, you said we couldn't table it. So I'm just gonna say no.
Very well. Where are we at, Monica? I didn't remember where she started.
Karen Tillman III?
Uh, yes.
Esther Bulway?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Yes, that passes. And that's all the legislation we have for tonight.
If those look this way. Are there any new business that comes before this council? Having none? I just need a- Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, ma'am. Sure you can.
Okay, so this format is for the law director. How are you guys ensuring that the residents are well informed of these ordinance numbers and the Resolution passage numbers? How are you ensuring that they're informed of those numbers? And are they allowed to weigh in on it before their place for approval? So right now, I'm hearing the ordinance numbers, and I'm hearing passage numbers, but I, the resident, am not, and I don't, I don't know the details of those numbers. So how are you ensuring?
Well, it's, some of it, just to be really honest with you, some of it is incumbent on the residents to seek out that information. So all of our documents are public records. So anyone who wants to come and attend a council meeting, these packets are prepared in advance of the meeting, and they're provided to members of village council. Any resident can request a copy of that packet and find all the information. In addition, all of our committee meetings are open to the public, and all these things that we have legislation for on tonight are typically discussed in those committee meetings. So the committee of the whole meeting is one that residents can attend. Most legislation comes from there, but then the other committees, such as, you know, recreation, or, you know, if there's a special meeting, then, and those are all noticed. So, and Monica can also provide the dates of all those meetings. So residents can attend those meetings and know what's, what's coming.
Thank you. So my B question is, since we're in a digital age, will that information be, again, on that people, the first website? Because a lot of this, it's very hard to constantly keep giving and requesting current copies.
Mm-hmm. They are. They are.
Thank you.
Yep, they are.
I'm not clear about the packet being part of the website. Usually we have agendas, and we have minutes. We're not-
Well, I mean, that's gonna be up to administration. I know that I've looked at, you know, various communities do it various ways. Some put the entire council packet on their website so that it's available, and some don't. So, that'll be an administrative decision.
Ms. Moore?
I think Emily will remember, when I was on council, it was very rare that we suspended the rules for everything at a council meeting. It appears that the suspension of the rules and voting on things before it can come around the next month seems to be the norm now. And I may be misunderstanding it, but I hear a motion, I hear a second, I hear a, let's suspend the rules, and it's passed. But in the past, and I know we don't have to do things the way we used to do them in the past, we didn't let a whole meeting go by where we suspended the rules on everything and passed everything, because everything was not an emergency. But maybe nowadays, everything is.
As you recall, from your time on council, there's a difference between something being an emergency and suspending the rules. Those are two different things, right? Tonight, all the ordinances that were approved were all appropriation ordinances, and those are time-sensitive ordinances. In addition, when the charter was amended in 2020, one of the amendments to the charter provided that resolutions are only read on one day. So we actually don't suspend the rules on resolutions, because it's not required. And those tend to deal with kind of the day-to-day business of the village. Now, that being said, and I know that you don't, you attend a lot of meetings, but not all of them. If there is a piece of legislation that would significantly impact the residents of Woodlawn, it is Woodlawn's tradition and practice to read those on separate days. So if we were going to create a new law, or something that would be, you know, have a substantial impact, certainly it would be read three times, and people who had opinions about that piece of legislation would be able to come and speak during public comment.
Thank you for that, because when Johnny Brad was in there, everything got three readings.
No.
It was very, well, not everything, but it was rare that a whole meeting, during the whole meeting, at least there'd be a third reading of at least one eye. You know what I'm saying? And it's, it's, it's just different, and I guess I could go back to my homework.
I also remember, just, you'll remember this, Gina, we used to have to read certain ordinances, the entire thing, word for word. And I had to do it, so we had to change some of those.
And you know what? It was good sometimes when we did that, because then the citizens understood what you guys were voting on. But thank you for clarifying that for me, and I just hope that we can move, move back to not making everything, what, what did you call it?
An emergency.
An emergency?
Yeah.
Or suspension of-
Suspending the rules, so it doesn't get read, read three times.
Yeah, because you can suspend the rules and still read, to back that in.
You can suspend the rules. Suspending the rules made that you simply only are required to read the title of that ordinance one time.
One time, yeah, that's the thing. Yeah, I understand what you're doing.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to, two things. One is, I'd like to make it known that I would like to have a recreation meeting on the 5th of April at 7:00 PM. And the information that Ms. Pam asked about regarding the cost of the sales and everything, if you have not gotten that prior to that meeting, could you make sure we have that information at the meeting?
So the cost of the warranty, length of the warranty, or both?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay. And to piggyback on to some of the conversation that's been going on, I remember when I first started coming around, we had committee meetings. And we've kinda gotten away from that when they began to have as many as a whole meeting. I personally would like to see us go back to having as many committee meetings as we possibly can, because that gave the residents an opportunity to come out and hear what was going on, and if they had any questions regarding whatever we were talking about, legislation that was coming up. Because as she mentioned, most time the legislation come up out of those meetings. Okay? And so I personally would like to see us getting back to having as many committee meetings as we can. You know, you may not necessarily need to have one every month, you know? It was, it was helpful.
Resident participation.
It was helpful.
Very well.
Well, my theory on that is, we put it out there for the residents, and if they choose to take advantage of it, fine. But if they don't, they can't say that we didn't make it available.
I'm just encouraged, we'll be able to get things from the website now. And they will let us know when we can come.
Again, is, I'm sorry. Do you have something? Again, is there anything else that comes before this council? Having none, I just need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion for adjournment. I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second. All ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Where are the rest of you?